In this meeting of July 15, 2013, of the Dubuque Community School Board District, or the School District Board of Education is called to order. Our mission is to develop world-class learners and citizens of character in a safe and inclusive learning community. Roll call, please.
Mr. Barton?
Here.
Mr. Bytine?
Here.
Mr. Davis?
Here.
Mr. Donahue?
Here.
Mr. Kruger?
Present.
Ms. Ryan?
Here.
Mr. Strillo?
Here.
All right. We're on our own for Bledge of Allegiance, so if you please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. President, I move the Board of Education to approve the agenda as submitted.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the agenda as submitted. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Mr. President, I move the Board of Education to approve the minutes of the regular meeting on June 10th, the strategic planning meeting on June 24th, and the special meeting on July 9, 2013, as submitted.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the regular meeting on June 10th, the strategic planning meeting on June 24th, and the special meeting on July 9, 2013, as submitted. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries.
Does it move the...
No, it's just a salute. Any board salutes? I have one. Received a letter from Nancy Van Milligan at the Community Foundation of Greater Dubuque, writing on behalf of Project Hope and the district's support of that, and particularly Shirley Horstman's support. Nancy wanted to thank both Stan and myself for her support. And Director of Student Services indicated, and I quote, "Shirley's been an amazing partner from the beginning. She's been a tremendous supporter of our work to make the re-engagement center a success, along with the leadership at each of the high schools." And I'll remind you, they've been able to, that partnership has been able to re-engage more than 80 young people who have dropped out of school, get them back into education opportunities, including returning to high school, or the online rapid recovery GED programs, et cetera. So Shirley, accept our thanks and appreciation for all your good work in that area.
Mr. President, I move the Board of Education suspend the rules of order and go into open forum.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education suspend the rules of order and go into open forum. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? On behalf of the board members at this time, I'd invite any member of the audience to step to the microphone with comments about items of interest or concern. Please state your name and your address. It would be appreciated, knowing that Mr. Eisenhardt is approaching the podium, to remind him, as a fellow official, that three seconds isn't really three seconds, it's more like two and a half. So we certainly ask you to...
Three minutes. Basketball official, not elected official.
I did say basketball official. So obviously, working to keep the meeting moving along, so welcome.
Ten-second rules, the one I'm working...
Is that... Yeah. That's because you have to get both hands, or both hands and toes involved in it. So, thank you for coming.
Well, you'll be, thank you very much for the opportunity to make a brief presentation. State Representative Chuck Eisenhardt, 1665 Kaufman Avenue, represent the 100th House District, which includes senior high schools of your elementary schools, Prescott, Fulton, Audubon, Eisenhower, and Marshall, I believe, is the extent of it. And so, happy to report a little bit today, in a measure of reverse accountability, on what we accomplished during the recent legislative session. You know, state legislators, we work for food. And so, we appreciate the opportunity to sit down with you in advance of the session, along with the city, county, and other public jurisdictions, to hear about your priorities at that pre-legislative dinner that we have in, I think it's December, early December, late November. And so, and many of you, as board members, and your staff, and leadership administration come down, visit with us during the legislative session, so I think it's only appropriate, at least in a gesture of reverse accountability, that one of us come and maybe give a presentation to you, however brief, on some of the things that we did do during the session in connection with K-12 education. President Donahue will be happy to know that I neglected to bring my glasses in today, so I won't read the two-page summary that I provided to you in the board packet. But I think it does highlight a number of issues, from our perspective as legislators, some of those items that may have come to your attention through your own staff, or maybe the association of school boards. Obviously, the biggest highlight is that we came through with some additional funding this year and next, 4 percent, although 2 percent of it was, like, one time only. You can't build it into your budgets going forward. But I think, given our revert, the reversal of our fortunes in recent years, we could afford, and we, I think, made a wise decision to afford some more substantial increases for K-12 education compared with more recent years. It's regrettable when we tie those deliberations over those decisions to other policy issues that they're really not germane to. I like to think, when it comes to educational improvement, they're good policies, they're good policies, and we can figure that out, we should be able to figure that out, and deal with those without necessarily holding your funding hostage in the process, because we know that you need to go about making those decisions in a timely fashion, just like we do. The flip side of that coin is, now that we've actually completed what we consider an education reform bill, I prefer to call it a school improvement bill, the pressure's off, so to speak. Next year, we don't have to feel like we have to pass a gargantuan education bill going into an election year, so maybe that'll give us a chance to step back and focus on more significant, simple, isolated policies that can be helpful in the short term. And encourage you to continue to approach us, not only at the board level, but at the staff level, because I know in my years with the Dubuque Area Labor Management Council, we have a tremendous history of the teachers and administration working together, especially when it comes to teacher improvement. And I like to think that we, at the state level, can learn as much from your example as we can, trying to impose our view on what ought to be done. One issue that's not covered in the summary here, that I know has kind of been a hot tamale in recent years, and that is the whole question regarding school start dates. We wisely, again, withheld our verdict as a legislature on what would be wise to do in that situation. That's actually a bipartisan view that I shared with last year's Education Committee, Chair of our Education Committee, who I believe may have even lost his seat on that committee due to his outspoken opinion on that. I think a lot of factors go in to those decisions that we really can't assess at the state level. They're really our local decisions. And whether or not you should start later, because it benefits the tourism industry in the area, is something you should sit down with your tourism folks and talk about those issues, and how you can come to a mutual accommodation. It shouldn't come from us dictating a one-size-fits-all solution. Because frankly, I'm not sure that that's being driven by the best interest, even of your students, who hold the jobs at those facilities, and they'd like to hold on to another week or two. I think frankly, there are other people in the job market who could fulfill that service, if necessary. So, that's one issue that we did not deal with, hopefully, we will not deal with at the legislative level, although you need to monitor what's happening at the departmental level, because the Education Department may be reviewing that and coming up with, maybe it's some tighter rules around the waivers, et cetera. So with that, I'd just leave you with the written presentation. There are extra copies in the back for members of the public who'd like to review those. Just a couple of suggestions. Don't hesitate if there is an issue that you think you need to review in depth. Don't hesitate to invite me, or Senator Bowman, or Senator Yocum, or Representative Murphy to your meeting. Be happy to discuss those in depth, especially if they need some type of public understanding around them, because discussing those issues in public is a good way to develop public understanding. And I would also encourage you to maybe think a little bit earlier in the process regarding what your priorities might be for next year, especially if they involve reaching some type of accommodation with other districts, joint lobbying around the state. Usually, by the time January 13th or 14th comes around, the stars are in their place, and usually, what will rise to the top of our agenda has already been decided. So, if there are some important priorities that you have, I encourage you, maybe at one of your upcoming meetings, to start discussing those, and get to us earlier in the fall, rather than later, so that we have a chance to start getting our arms around those issues in time for the next session. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have about any of the items you see on our summary, or that might be on your mind.
Mr. President, question for our guest, Chuck. Good to see you. The governor, in an address given to Rotary, Dubuque Rotary, about two months ago, prior to the bill passing and being, getting finally negotiated, he made reference to the changing of the way schools in Iowa will be funded. In particular, he was referring to the calculus of allowable growth. And I noted that in the bill, there was an attempt to change the name of it, but not necessarily the function or the structure of it. What insight can you give us relative to any forward momentum on altering the way we fund schools in Iowa?
Yeah, some of us scratch our heads whenever you see the name of something changed. Usually, that's maybe part of a longer-term strategy to deal with the substance, and, you know, words have consequences, and sometimes changing the name may change the perception of, you know, how the structural issues may be dealt with down the line. I have no idea specifically what's in the mind of the governor. I do know that when it comes to how much money you put in that pipeline, that is a separate decision from how the pipeline works and the structure of funding. And I, for one, am very hesitant to try to deal with both of those simultaneously, because a lot of times, when you change the structure, within the context of the current percentages that we provide, that may make, that may have some serious ramifications that we don't really understand, if we do them separately. So, I think those structural changes need to have some very significant discussion, and not to be taken lightly. On Thursday, the legislature will be putting together its interim committees, identifying which ones go forward. I would look towards that. If you don't see an interim committee to discuss school funding issues, then it's probably not something that's going to be dealt with before the next election. But if there is an interim committee set up, that's something you want to make sure that your representatives are participating in, and fully briefing you on those discussions.
Thank you.
Chuck, thanks for coming. I mean, we don't hear from people in the legislature very often here, so it's certainly a pleasure to have you. And I think I can speak for most of us, and say we really appreciate whatever latitude the legislature can give us, as far as local control goes, not only on the school start date, but other issues as well. I mean, we have a great group here, 10,000 employees, 10,000 employees.
Oh, man, we had it...
Lots of employees.
Seventeen hundred.
2,000 employees, 10,000 students. A lot of people are committed, you know, that feel like we make good decisions on behalf of, you know, based on local issues, local factors. So we appreciate whatever latitude you can give us on that. For the board, I would concur with Chuck's statement about getting to the legislature early. I mean, they started having your caucus meetings, October, November, where the Democrats, Republicans, are getting ready to formulate what their strategies are for coming up in the legislature. And really, I mean, now is probably the time we ought to be having conversations about things that are important to us. And I know one of those things that's important to us is resolution of the issue we have with the funding of the school district, as it relates to the services provided by Hillcrest. So that'll be, I'm sure that you've, you're familiar with that issue, and, but that's a big issue that's still somewhat unresolved, and needs to be resolved, as it has a big impact on our district. But we appreciate all you do, and thanks for coming.
You're welcome. I think the governor, Linda Fandell, made a special call to Representative Murphy the day before he vetoed that language in the bill. And so I think he, that means they understand the significance of the importance. And it sounds like they want, I'm hoping what that means is they want to get around to saying yes, but doing it on their terms, rather than being told what to do and how to resolve it. That's the charitable, you know, interpretation I'm giving it. And I don't think Dubuque's the only district in that boat. I think there are others with similar situations, although maybe they aren't currently getting, you know, payment for those costs. But assessing the impact in other districts, and how it might impact other districts, I know, is important.
Part of the issue is, I think, there are only five or six districts that are affected, so it's not a statewide problem. Those facilities house students from all of the other 295 districts. And so I think for five of us, four or five of us, it's a significant issue for the rest. It's not really on their radar.
So it's hard to get to 51 votes in our house if you only got five districts affected, which is why we need the tools to educate our colleagues about the importance of it, and how, basically, kind of like, you know, if this were your district, how would you want it to be resolved? But you're right, our caucus, by the time our caucus has come around in, you know, November or so, our members, hopefully, will have heard from their constituents about what the priorities are. And if we have five, or six, or 10 coming in, saying, "I've heard from my school board, and we need to look at this and deal with this," that can have a big impact on our outlook as we go into that session.
Just a couple of quick thoughts. First of all, I want to thank you as well for coming. It's great to have the dialogue. State money is not state money. State money is our money. When it comes to schools, we have to hand it over to the state, so it can be handed back to us. Problem number one. Problem number two, when we don't get, when we don't know how much money, I'm not saying this is your fault, Chuck, when we don't know how much money we're going to have to, of our own money, that we gave to the state, that they give back to us, when we don't know how much money we're going to have to work with, and we have to go into contract negotiations, we have no choice but to offer 0 percent raises, which is an insult to our staff. It's, at best, it's, it's a mess, at best. We don't know how much money we have to deal with. And so, you have to stop that at the state level. You have to. You can't let, you have your, I believe, you have your own policies that say districts are to be notified by such and such a time, tell me if I'm wrong, on what your money is going to be, right? Allowable growth. And you haven't abided by your own rules. And when you don't do that, it really creates a mess for us. So if you could take that little gospel, according to Barton, back to your friends in Des Moines, and I appreciate the job you're doing, but spread that to the group, that it's, it makes it impossible to function responsibly with, financially in the district, when this continues to happen year after year.
Appreciate that. I think many of my colleagues and I shared that concern. We tried to get this dealt with in a timely manner on the House side. As you know, I'm not part of the majority caucus, so can't really influence, you know, what gets done in the House as well as I could if that were different. And I think, I'm hoping that with the other things we did, specifically some property tax reform measures, since so much of school funding also comes from property taxes, by having dealt with property taxes, perhaps that will also take some of the need to, you know, delay the decision on that off the table, since we needed to work on the property tax issue as well simultaneously. Hopefully, that's another issue we won't have to talk about so much in the next two or three years. Hopefully, we'll have a chance to let the changes we made work, and see how they work before we start stirring that pot again. So hopefully, that'll take some of that away as well.
The Republicans would say the same thing about the Democrats, and personally, I don't, I don't care. I don't care if it's a Democrat or a Republican thing, it's got to stop.
Well, we certainly had the resources this year not to have to delay that decision, so we couldn't use the excuse that we needed to see where other spending needed to be made, as the reason for the delay, that's for sure.
And we're set for next year. We've got next year set.
And things are, and things are continuing to look well for us, in terms of the budget. The recent reports I've seen say we're ahead of estimates for this and the next fiscal year, based on what we did our budget on.
Well, Representative Eisenhardt, we do thank you for being here. I would, I can assure you, we always have, and will continue to partner with our local legislators. I would say that a lot of the comments made tonight are clearly aimed at maybe another audience, because I think we feel very good about the relationship we have with our, with our local legislators. We know they get it. Probably the things I would echo, pass along to your colleagues, would be, we'll get to you early, you get to us, in terms of education, early. Because while I understand, maybe there's not as much noise going on next year, we still need you to set that funding for the following school year, next year, early, so that we can get our work done, and accomplish some of the priorities around student achievement. I know that we share with many of you and your colleagues.
Absolutely.
Yep. Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Move the Board of Education reinstate the rules of order and return to regular session.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education reinstate the rules of order and return to regular session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve those items listed in the consent agenda.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to, that the Board of Education approve those items listed in the consent agenda. Is there any board members wishing to remove any items within that agenda for further Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries.
Mr. President, we have a facility support services meeting, and have the following recommendations for the board to consider. First being, I move the Board of Education approve the purchase of a vehicle tracking system, and engine diagnostic hardware and software from Tyler Technologies for the Transportation Department in the amount of $78,364.
Second.
Hang on a second.
Page 108.
108. Am I going too far? Why don't I hit it?
Let's see your motions. Page 108.
Okay, hang on a second.
There you go.
Got it. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the purchase of a vehicle tracking system and engine diagnostics hardware and software from Tyler Technologies for the Transportation Department in the amount of $78,364. Any discussion?
I know that Dr. Hall is here. I don't know if most of us got that orientation, but is there a need to repeat any of the information that we received?
It may be beneficial, I didn't receive it, it may be beneficial for the public to have a brief...
Chris, do you want to take a moment and just outline it?
What I hold in my hand is a Go Six unit. This unit is attached to all of our buses, and also district vehicles, 121 vehicles. It is a plug-and-play device that gives us feedback on locations of buses, engine diagnostics, and can generate history of routes, can generate many, many reports for us, such as the amount of diesel fuel that we are consuming through idling. It is basically a fantastic tool to communicate with families, because we do receive a lot of telephone calls about where the bus is, how long is it going to be until the bus arrives, or I missed the bus, what time was it there? So we can provide up-to-date, accurate information to our constituents. And so, we have been looking at this possibility for over two years. When we first started taking a look at a new routing system, we selected Versitrans from Tyler Technologies. While we were doing our research to select routing software, we also started investigating the possibility of GPS. And we were looking for something that would integrate with Versitrans from Tyler Technologies, which also integrates with Power School, our student management system. So we are very confident in the proposal that we received from Tyler Technologies. They have done a fantastic job with tech support, and they have provided us with the opportunity to gain valuable information, because there are literally dozens and dozens of companies that are now trying to pitch GPS systems to school districts.
Chris, I just might add that you presented this to the Support Services Group, and one of the things that it does, not only do we want to be sure we have the right technology in the classroom, but the right technology that would save us money, make bus transportation safer, higher accountability for bus drivers. I know this also impacts their clocking in, clocking out opportunities.
Yes.
So there's a lot of things that go into this, and it also meshes with our legacy systems, which is very important. So we're not, you know, adding things that don't talk to other things, they really actually talk together. So, we appreciate that report, and thank you.
Thank you.
So is this a real-time system, then?
Yeah.
And it's also, we're talking about not only for buses, but other vehicles, like vans that take kids to events?
It's portable.
Yes, it'll be attached to all of our school vans, and also all of our buildings and grounds vehicles, including my vehicle. So you can find out where I am at any time in my vehicle. So it is, it is a system that we're hoping to use for the good, as a means of helping our drivers and attendants and our families. We're not planning on going to the dark side, which, when we visited the Minnesota districts, that was one thing that they definitely emphasized, is that there's so much information that can be used for the good. And that's how we plan on utilizing this.
What about the future? Obviously, technology changes very, very quickly, and this seems, I mean, is there a solution two years from now, when this becomes obsolete, and something else is better, faster, quicker, stronger?
I think you're always going to find something that's faster, quicker, stronger, just the way, the nature of the beast with technology. But we're hoping this is going to be a step into a time and attendance system, also a step where we can actually take attendance of the students that are on our buses at any given time, and that's a tremendous safety issue. And that's what this is all about, it is about safety, and that is our charge at transportation, to transport children safely to and from school. And also, we transported over 1,600 activities trips this year. So we became a member of the million-mile club, with the amount of miles we put on there. So, yes, the technology's going to change, but we're hoping this is part of a suite that we will continue to improve.
I would just add, I mean, certainly, Chris is right, we're, we're stay on the, on the light side, not the dark side. But I do think, remember, too, that in addition to some of the efficiencies, et cetera, we're, we're asking Chris's group to really be a catalyst, working with us, to do some real different things around how we move kids and the transportation opportunities we provide, in an effort to bolster things like activities and those types of things in our, in our district, which means the more appropriate, relevant, you know, real-time technology that we can utilize in order to do that, because that, you know, absent of that, that becomes a bit of a spider web after, after a while. So we, I think, to Matt's point, I think if you waited, always were worried about that next best thing, you'd never invest in anything, because it's always going to be something. But I think we've hooked our wagon to somebody that we have a lot of confidence in, we've, we certainly researched the integration and the way that can work with our other systems.
Definitely.
Yep, great. Any other questions for Dr. Hall?
Good stuff, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There is a motion on the table, it's been seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries.
Move the Board of Education authorize the Board President to sign the easement agreement with CenturyLink QC for the installation of communications equipment on Eisenhower Elementary School property.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education authorize the Board President to sign the easement agreement with CenturyLink QC for installation of communications equipment on Eisenhower Elementary School property. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Move the Board of Education approve Anderson Design and Consulting as the architect engineer for the central kitchen loading dock project at a cost of $5,700.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve Anderson Design and Consulting as the architect engineer for the central kitchen loading dock project at a cost of $5,700. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Move the Board of Education approve the Anderson Design and Consulting as the architect engineer for the senior high school library roof project at a cost of $7,500.
Second. Moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve Anderson Design and Consulting as the architect engineer for the senior high school library roof project at a cost of $7,500. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
I want to just say, as a prefatory comment to this next motion, that it thrills me to no end to actually have a decrease, but we all know where that will go. I move the Board of Education approve change order number one to Portson... I move the Board of Education approve change order number one to Ports and Construction Incorporated on the Kennedy Elementary School Edition renovation project in the deduct amount of $20,747.55.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve change order number one to Ports and Construction Inc. on the Kennedy Elementary School Edition renovation project in the deduct amount of $20,747.55. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? You were going to make a friendly amendment that we would not accept change order number two.
No, I was just going to say, if you go to the next one, you'll notice we're giving it right back.
We find a way to do that, it's a give and take, but...
I move the Board of Education approve change order number one to Ports and Construction Incorporated on the Washington Middle School Multipurpose Room Edition project in the amount of $47,851.
They doubled it.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve change order number one to Ports and Construction Inc. on the Washington Middle School Multipurpose Room Edition project in the amount of $47,851. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
I move the Board of Education approve change order number two to Clower Development Corporation on the Carver Elementary School Classroom Edition project in the amount of $659.60.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve change order number two to Clower Development Corporation on the Carver Elementary School Classroom Edition project in the amount of $659.60. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
I move the Board of Education approve change order number one to Ports and Construction Incorporated on the Senior High School Small Gym Floor Replacement Project in the amount of $13,578.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve change order number one to Ports and Construction Inc. on the Senior High School Gym Floor Replacement Project in the amount of $13,578. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
I believe Mr. Kelleher will present the quarterly budget report.
Good evening, Board members, and Superintendent Ryan Gans. What's presented to you is the quarterly budget report, which includes 12 months' worth of operations. A couple highlights I'd like to bring to your attention, I believe it's on page 127 of your handout, or your packet. It's the general fund expenditures. You see that we had budgeted $119,300,000 roughly for the year. I believe in past meetings, we had projected about $116 million to be where we end up for the year. The number you see here is $112,700,000 round numbers. This is a cash basis number, because that's what this document is presented on. We will have accrual adjustments, as well as receivables and payables, but it'll be the payables and the accruals that generally will make that number a little higher, so it'll probably come closer to $116 million than you see the $112. But the point is, I think we are on target for where we expected to be at the end of the year. The other item I'd like to talk or bring to your attention is, on page 133 of your information, you will see the general fund revenues. We have estimated or budgeted $111,590,000 roughly. I think it's more by luck than good planning, but the year ended up $111,538,000, so about $55,000.
Always take credit, that's just good planning.
So again, we are right on target where we expected to be. Any questions you have for that, on any of the reports?
When will we know where our ending spending authority balance, what kind of timeframe will that come?
It'll be mid to late September. Our CAR upload, as well as the special education supplement upload, are due September 15th, so that's when the final information will go to the state, and we'll be able to calculate those numbers at that time. I don't see it venturing far, because our numbers are fairly close to where we had projected.
Do you have any information about where the assessed values are coming in at, from the recent assessment, are they going to be high, you know, what kind of percentage increase we're looking at in assessed values over the year-over-year?
We have received no information recently from the county auditor, but usually they're 3.5 percent. Historically, the last five years, they've been about a 3.5 percent increase in assessed value, and I don't see that changing. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Move the Board of Education approve the quarterly budget report as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the quarterly budget report as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Ed Programs Policy Strategy Committee report, Mr. Striebel.
We didn't have a meeting.
That's a report.
Yeah, look forward to the next one.
Okay. All right. That takes us to new business, a series of motions associated with collective bargaining.
I move that the Board of Education approve the agreement with the Dubuque Education Association as presented.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the agreement with the Dubuque Education Association as presented.
Mr. Kolpitz is going to carry us through the discussion.
Good evening. First of all, this is one of three that we're talking about tonight, but the first one here, with the teachers in negotiation, I'm happy to report that we have a 3.58 percent increase in salaries in the base, a $327 increase in the base, and that does represent a 3.58 percent settlement. The teachers agreed to take a lump sum payment one time, as you heard Mr. Eisenhardt talking earlier about us getting 2% this year that goes away, that we don't have to carry over every year, so the 3.58 percent represents what we will carry over in salary schedule from year to year to year. The lump sum payment of $170 represents a four-point total package increase, a 4.0 percent total package increase. So that lump sum payment goes away after this one year, the teachers agreed to take that this year, and so the total package increase, again, the salary in the base is a 3.58 percent. When you add that one-time lump sum payment in this year, it is a total package increase of 4.0 percent.
Any questions?
Where are we sitting at, the 3.58, where does that sit along the state trend line with other districts as far as...
The 3.58 percent is below the trend lines that we're seeing in the state, which are around 3.8, 3.9 in some of the UEN, so there were a few that settled below that.
The 4 percent, so where we kind of split that is, we're below it in the ongoing base increase, we're above it when you go to the 4 percent with a one-time lump sum, so it was really kind of a win-win, in the sense that it recognized the teachers for next year, and then it comes down to a 3.58, which is more palatable with the 2 percent ongoing dollars that we'll have, we'd like to have seen 2 percent, 2 percent, but...
He left.
He watched it on TV.
Yeah, exactly, yes. Are there any other questions? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Abstained.
One abstention, motion carries. Thank you.
I move that the Board of Education approve the agreement with the maintenance employees as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the agreement with the maintenance employees as presented. Mr. Kolpitz.
On the maintenance employees, we've agreed to a 3.67 percent total package increase. That represents 48 cents per hour increase on the wages. Again, there are some new insurance fees that are in there with the PACA fees that, through the Affordable Healthcare Act, that are included in the budget, but ultimately it's a total package increase of 3.67 percent.
Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you.
I move that the Board of Education approve the agreement with the bus driver, bus attendant employees as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the agreement with the bus driver, bus attendant, employees as presented. Mr. Kolpitz.
The total package increase for the bus drivers and attendants is a 3.70 percent increase. It does represent a 53 cent an hour raise for drivers and attendants, and if you're wondering why that's out of skew with some of the other ones you've heard before, the drivers and attendants don't currently have much in the benefits package area, and some of that will change with the Affordable Healthcare Act. But ultimately, they get to put a little bit more toward the salary, because they're not spending as much on the benefits right now, there's only a certain dollar amount that goes into the insurance benefits, and that dollar amount is fixed, and certain individuals qualify for that. Again, when the Affordable Healthcare Act kicks in, some of that's going to change, and you'll see those salary increases a little bit different for some of those groups. And so if you see some of the numbers, you think, why did so-and-so, what group got a larger hourly increase than others, that is generally the reason, it's about the benefits package that they've negotiated over time. So again, a total package increase of 3.7 percent for the drivers and attendants.
There was some discussion at some point about activities buses, and whether the contract language we had with the bus drivers allowed for the flexibility we needed to run those activities buses, is that, I don't know if that was true or not true, but has that gotten resolved so that that is no longer an obstacle for how we handle our activities, if we handle activity buses?
Some of those language issues have been addressed, but we, there's enough flexibility that we'll be able to make it happen. Really, what it comes down to, or probably what you're referring to, is there is a certain hour guarantee. We guarantee all of our bus drivers a two-hour minimum works time, so if a bus driver comes in, we're going to pay them, so there was some concern, will those activity buses be close enough to the, you know, we don't want to pay somebody two hours of work for half an hour, but obviously, we can't hire somebody for only going to pay them, you know, small pieces, so that's part of the issue. It has to do with the timing of, if I run a route from when high school day ends at 2:30 to 4:30, and then these buses leave an hour later, what do we do with that in-between time? So there's enough flexibility there that we'll be able to make it happen, but there's, there is some work to be done with that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve the non-bargaining salary and benefits package as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the non-bargaining salary and benefits package as presented.
I will handle that one, because Mr. Kolpitz is in that group. Before I start, though, I do want to thank Rick and Kevin Kelleher, Joanne Luke and Rick Till, and a whole variety of other folks who have spent, really, a marathon session between when the legislature decided that we would be receiving the 2 plus 2 percent and the negotiations, the time that's gone into making sure that we have contracts that we can present to our employees. Actually, teachers will get their contracts starting tomorrow, which is an exceptionally late date, normally try to have those out before a school year end, so Rick and crew have put in many, many, many hours trying to negotiate all seven of those contracts in a really pretty brief period of time. So to the non-bargaining group, we have, as you have heard, many, most of our employees are members of bargaining units. We do have 90 employees that are not. Those are administrators, so not the superintendent, but all other administrators in the state, or in the district can, not by state law, be members of bargaining units, so they are all part of the non-bargaining staff, as is Ministry of Assistance, Coordinator, Student Services, Truancy Officers, IT Staff, Garage Supervisor, Manager and Assistant Managers, Dispatchers, Athletic Trainers, Facility Schedular, and Print Center Employees, so it's really a mixed bag of folks within that. As you have heard from Mr. Kolpitz, our range in settlements have been from about 3.67 to 3.7, except for in the case where we have the lump sum payment where it goes to 4 percent. So what I am proposing for the non-bargaining folks is a 3.66 percent increase, so it would be the lowest of all of the bargaining units, but just, I mean, only by a hundredth of a percent, so it really is in line with what we are doing for other employees. Of course, that 3.66 percent is total package, so it includes increases in insurance premiums, IPRIS cost increases, as well as salary increases, and PACA fees from, which have driven up a lot of our packages this year.
Any other questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries.
I'm sorry, noted abstention from Mr. Kruger.
I move that the Board of Education approve the 2013-14 contract with Superintendent Stan Ryan Gans.
Second.
Moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the 2013-14 contract with Superintendent Stan Ryan Gans. This is more just memorializing this, we actually, our contract includes this school year, but we wanted to make sure that we got it in the minutes, since we were approving many of these other contracts, so... Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Any board member administrative issues, we've got non-agenda items, you know, Mr. Byteen has got some comments?
Actually, we're going to postpone that, and going to do it first through Ed Programs, and then the programs will determine what comes before the Board.
Very good.
Good.
Thank you.
Superintendent Ryan Gans, we're in some ongoing discussions with the facility study for a new pool, or feasibility study for a pool complex, is there anything going on with that, or what's the status of that, or...
We've had several meetings with the consultants, a go-to virtual meeting last week, so that continues to make progression. There will be at some point, in the relatively near future, some more public input taken on that, so it does continue to move forward. I think it calls, the RFP, Kevin calls for a report out from that group in September?
Mid-September.
Mid-September.
Are we still planning on having some sort of joint meeting with the city council, or is that...
I think that's been difficult to organize, so I think there'll be more information on that later. I think there will be at some point, I just don't know if we've identified a date. I believe that July 30 is probably on hold, but we'll confirm that in the next day or two.
Okay.
Just with calendars, it's, I think, become difficult, but we will confirm that tomorrow. I believe we have a meeting, I'm sorry, on Wednesday, Kevin and I have a meeting with the city manager and their lead on that committee to try to finalize that, but I think scheduling, it's likely to not be on the 30th. So on Wednesday, after our meeting, we'll try to identify a date, or ask for some alternate dates from this group, as well as the city council.
Mr. President, I just had a couple other comments. I attended the music on the march the other night with the Dubuque Colts and Drum Corps, and it was a very large public event at the New Dollsville Field, and the facility seemed to hold up very well, and there's a lot of work involved in any of those types of big events with staff, from the people at the district, and both, and the custodians at Senior High, and so it was a great night, a great event, and the facility seemed to be a very nice representation of what we hoped it would be for holding large community events. We're about a year, or a month and a half from football season, so I guess we'll start getting much more attention there, and with regards to activities, I guess I just wanted to make a note that tomorrow night at 7 o'clock at Veterans Field, Dubuque Senior High will be playing Dubuque Hempstead for the opportunity to go to the state tournament, and the Dubuque Public Schools have not had a team in the Dubuque, or in the state softball tournament since 1985, so it's been a long time, but tomorrow night, one of our schools will be representing the Dubuque community in the state softball tournament, so anybody that doesn't have anything to do tomorrow night, it would be a great event to go out and take in and cheer both teams on.
You sounded like that guy from Hoosiers. First time! Okay, all right, George.
Good school this size.
Good stuff, yes, absolutely. Any other board member comments?
I would just like to clarify a little bit, my pushback to Chuck, and his comment was, and I really appreciate Chuck coming, boy, it'd be great if we had our legislators regularly come to school board meetings, that was, I thought it was great that Chuck came. The comment was, when I asked about how we need to know, we need the proper notice as subscribed by the law, we need proper notice on what our state funding is going to be, and when we don't get that state funding, we can't plan appropriately. His response was, well, we weren't in the majority on that one, and I'll tell you what, I don't care if it's the Republicans' fault, I don't care if it's the Democrats' fault, I don't care if it's the Bo Moose Party's fault, the bottom line is, we need a functional system when it comes to school finance, and in this past six months, it has not been functional. We've gone into negotiations, not knowing what our dollar... We've, we've gone into negotiations, not knowing what our dollars are going to be. And personally, you know, with all due respect to Chuck, he cares about education as much as anybody. I don't want to hear, I don't want to hear the finger pointing in front of me as a school board guy. I don't care whose fault it is. It's time that we work together at the, at the local, state, and federal level to make a political system work. And it, I get fired up about that, because I think it's, it's important that we're able to deliver what we need to deliver to our employees.
And I appreciate you bringing it up. I think it was a good point, and, and I guess, one of the points I made was, they have addressed, next year, we know it's going to be 4%. Is that correct? So they have, the problem we had this year, we're not going to have next year, but who knows? I think Mike brought up, next year, you got to deal with next year. So get next year's done when you, when you get out there, and get it done early, so we, so we can start planning those things.
And I think we just, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Hopefully, we're back in that system, you know, by, by their own rules, regulations, we should always know a year and a half in advance. So we should always know not only the year we're coming into, but the following year, so that we can make, you know, purposeful decisions about education, so we don't find ourselves in a situation where we have to offer our employees a 0% raise. That doesn't feel good to anybody, especially the employees. And so hopefully, we'll maintain that, that year and a half advance notice as we move into the future, because it is vital for us to be a successful organization, to know where those dollars are going to be.
And I would suggest we keep the pedal on the metal, because it still takes 16% allowable growth to get to the average.
That's right.
And, you know, we're not, I think this, I think we certainly all agree that, you know, throwing money at something is not the solution, but at the same time, you cannot save your way to student, higher student achievement in the state of Iowa. And so I think we continue to make that case, that we're good stewards of those dollars, but frankly, you know, to get excited and pat yourself on the back about 2-plus-2, and then 4, I think is still missing the bigger picture. So I know this board is committed to doing that, so. Anything else? Preview of upcoming board meeting?
We'll have a board meeting August 12th, which is on the, sort of the verge of the new school year, so very excited, and a lot of work going on, as has been mentioned, through building and grounds, and with technology, and a lot of areas to start the school year successfully next year. So we'll have a regular board meeting on August 12th, but it's kind of on the eve of the start of a new school year, so it'll be, it's an exciting time for us.
Great. Fantastic. With that, we are adjourned. Thank you.[1774.78]